This conference will now be recorded.
8:00 PM, we're on go meeting and we'll begin the meeting with a... Fred, do I just move? We're going to just move the order around a little bit as we wait for the chairman and Jeremy to get on as we're having some technical difficulties. We're going to move the... to the approval of the minutes to the beginning of, before we begin our public hearing tonight.
I'm happy to amend the agenda, move to amend the agenda to move the approval of minutes to the top of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Thank you, Mr. Warble. Hold on one second. It's Mr. Alvany. Hi, Mr. Alvany. You're on camera, calling me. Yeah, we're doing that right now. Yeah, I got your text. All right, thanks. Excellent. So let us...
Move. Do I move? Larry seconded. We should have a vote on that.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Rand. Riley, Rand, and Warble and Leahy. Okay, so we're moved to approve the minutes from May 12th. And everyone here was there. Do we have any comments from this meeting?
May 12th.
Why don't we start with Mr. Warble? Do you have anything on this?
I was so glad to see my name spelled right everywhere, so I'm...
All right, Mr. Rand. Mr. Rand, you're okay?
I have no comments.
Okay, Mr. Riley, you're okay?
Moving approval.
Okay, seeing there's no notes, would Mr. Riley like to move to approve it? May I have a second? Mr. Rand?
Do you want me to move it or second?
All in favor?
All right.
Fantastic. Move to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2020. Moving on to the minutes from May 19th, 2020. The commission members that are on today were then there. We have any comments from Mr. Riley on these minutes?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Warble. Mr. Rand?
I have nothing.
No comments, sorry.
Approve? Let's see. Motion to approve by Mr. Warble.
Motion to approve, please.
Thank you. May I have a second for Mr. Riley?
Happy to.
All right, all in favor? Fantastic. Mr. Warble's also in favor. Excellent. So what, this is okay? Fred, we're good to go on those? Did I see? We also have... Okay.
If you wish to move to begin deliberations on... we need to begin deliberations on both 20 Juniper application as well as 77 Boston Post Road, which is the... Let's hear the building. So perhaps begin deliberations on one or both of those applications.
Okay.
I would encourage we not do 1077 because I have to beg off of that one.
Ah, okay. So we're going to move this around if everyone could be a little flexible and we're going to do deliberate impossible decisions on... Do I need to... Do I need to... Do we need to have a vote or anything to move the deliberations up in the agenda?
I don't think so. No.
We went ahead and moved the general meeting to the top of the... to the top of the meeting here, so we're okay for that.
Okay, fine. So... Jared Allen is on that side. Review number 213C, landfilling and regating application number 186A, special permit application number 311 20 Juniper LLC, 20 Juniper Road. So this was the proposal to construct a new 30 by 60 pickable sports court. We went through this many times, including approving the lighting on each side of the property and calling approximately 12 landscape areas in existing infotribes to allow outdoor school in the southwest corner of the residence. Call in approximately 13 by 28 foot pergola and a gravel blue stone terrace on the east side of the existing swimming pool and call attention to the government of the community.
It looks like... Jennifer, let me hold you up just a moment here. It looks like we have some background interference coming in. It appears that there's music coming in from somewhere. I'm not sure where that is. Everyone is muted at the moment except for...
I may have been responsible for that because I've got Channel 79 on which is playing music but not showing our meeting.
Okay, very good.
So would you like me to... Mr. Rand?
We... I would note that we also do have Steve Alvany joining us at the moment with Jeremy Ginsburg. Can you hear us, guys?
Yes, we can. Thank you, everybody, for getting us.
Very good.
Apologize for that.
So the meeting was started. The minutes from both May 12th and May 19th were approved. We have moved to begin deliberations on 20 Juniper and Jennifer is in the process of reading that agenda at the moment.
Hey, keep going, Jennifer. You're doing great.
Okay, so do you want me to repeat? Was it... Could you hear what I was saying over Mr. Rand's class? Okay, fantastic. Okay, so let's go around the horn, as Mr. Alvany would say. Does anyone have any comments? Or how are we feeling about this application? Mr. Riley, I'll start with you.
I looked at the hours of operation for the lights carefully. I think they were correct. The rest of it, I had no comments on.
Okay, Mr. Rand?
I have no comments.
Okey dokey. Mr. Warble?
The hours are correct and I have no other comments.
Great. Miss Gailey?
No, I think the screening of the landscaping, the lights, the timer and the hours was sort of the issues that I think we were all concerned with and they seemed to be trusting it. So I have no further questions or questions.
Great. Mr. Alvany?
I think I'm fine. The only thing that I saw was item number six. I think I just want to note that at the second hearing, we reduced the lighting. But I think it came up later. Right? It reduced from, I think, competition to...
Recreation. That was in there.
Yeah, it's on the top of... Exactly. When six continues, then three, it's on the top.
Then we're good. We're all good. Thank you.
Okay, I agree. I thought the light, all the numbers were fine for the hours and screening was great. So can I have a motion to approve this draft resolution as written?
I'll make the vote to approve.
Oh, look at that. Miss Gailey, thank you for your motion. And I have a second from Mr. Rand. Was that you, Mr. Rand?
Yes, I seconded.
All in favor? Wonderful.
Yes.
Okay. That is positive resolution. Okay, do you want to... Mr. Alvany, do you want to move to the business site plan application 90P?
Thank you. Yes, I will. Thank you. 90P, here we go. Okay. Deliberation impossible decision following business site plan application 90- P, Darian Place LLC, 1077 Boston Post Road. We have a draft resolution on that. This is a Darian Playhouse.
I am recused and I will mute myself and try to be unseen.
Thank you very much, there, Mr. Riley. Then let's go around the commissioners. Let's go with Jennifer first.
Okay. I think this one, we're as good as we're going to get and I think everything in here looks good to me. As I said before, I hope that we all can come together as a town to figure out a parking solution. But this looks great to me. The resolution was great.
Kara Gailey, any comments?
Hi, I'm right here. No, no comments other than, you know, I think like Jen said, obviously we have to come to some sort of consistent and coherent parking solution at some point as, you know, in our planning sort of role. But I think as written, and I don't think this applicant should be treated differently than other applicants, despite us all being cognizant of the fact that there is a parking issue and it's a looming issue that may, you know, become a bigger issue. But no, no other issues or questions or concerns at this point.
Thanks, Kara. Larry Warble, any questions? Comments?
I'm going to just echo all of Kara's comments just now and also add in when we... The need to work with the town on parking and also traffic. As we're adding more parking, when we find a way to get more parking spots in, we already have a very clogged Route 1 and other areas too. So that's kind of going to have to be part of the review. But as far as this application is concerned, I'm just going to make one note, which is I am very saddened to see the Darian Playhouse go and leave our town. For what we had, it was great to have a movie theater here. But other than that, note that everything else on it looks fine for moving forward. Thank you.
Great. I'll miss the sticky floor. Rand?
Other than to endorse the comments of Commissioners Leahy and Gailey about parking, I have no comments.
That leaves me. I've got two comments. I think they're related. Number 24, the commission finds that there may be need for parking enforcement. I added the word private parking enforcement at the enforcement at the ownership slash applicant's expense. And that comes up a second time on finding, on resolution L, which is parking for shall be required at certain peak times. So I made a private parking enforcement. At the end of that sentence, says shared lot at the owner's expense. Everybody okay with that?
Can... Steve, can I ask something?
Sure, of course.
Um, I actually agree with the private... I agree with raising the issue of private, of parking enforcement and, you know, clarifying that, you know, it's private parking enforcement because it's, you know, not the town's, you know, parking lot. But I think it should be owners or the shared owners or the shared, right? Because it's not just the applicant who should have that burden since it's a shared parking lot.
But it's the app... We're dealing with the applicant. And if the Webster Bank people don't want to pay for it, that's not our problem.
I'm just concerned about sort of consistent treatment of the shared parking applicants. Because I don't think, you know, Interlight, I know there wasn't a major, you know, going to be a major parking intensity issue with that applicant. But, you know, we sort of, we talked about parking with that applicant but didn't require them to sort of bear the burden or the expense of the parking enforcement alone in a shared parking lot, you know? So I think... But I don't know if we should... It should be the owner's expense, but I don't know, just this applicant should bear the expense of it. Or if we can even, if we have the authority or jurisdiction to even... I don't know if we have. I don't know. I have to look into that.
Well, this is one thing. I think the wording applicant, I think you might be correct because in other instances like Interlight was quote unquote, I think, the applicant. And like Caffinero, maybe you've been the applicant, not the owner. So we should probably make it owner's expense, not the applicant's expense.
Yeah, just to be... I just want to be sort of be consistent.
That's fine. These are around town. They offered it up. The applicant offered it up.
Oh, okay.
Point of order. Do we know who the owner is? And this is a shared parking agreement, but is that's not deemed to be to spread the ownership among all the participants in this shared parking agreement as far as... It's a question, not a statement.
In this case, we do know that the applicant and the owner are the same. Both John and Carl.
Right. Darian Place LLC is the applicant and the owner.
And the owner of what? The whole parking lot?
No, just us.
Of the property, of this particular property. And I think you and I are kind of reaching the same point. You're just more articulate.
I don't think so. As long as you guys understand it, I can live with it. But I perceive some potential problems in the difference between the participants in the shared parking agreement and the owner of the parking lot.
Right, but this applicant is the one that's asking for us to do something for them and this owner is...
So you're putting the burden of in parking enforcement on the applicant.
Correct. And if they... Yeah, if they want to offload it on the other two parties, that's up to them. If they don't, they offered it up. It was their off.
All right.
Right, I just want to make sure it's private, not public because...
I agree with that point.
They want us, the town, to do it and we're not doing it. And someone's got to pay for it. Okay?
Yep.
So that's okay with everybody?
With those clarifications, yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve this draft resolution as amended.
Motion to approve as amended?
Thanks, Jen. Do I have a second? From Larry Warble or Jim Rand?
I'll second. All right.
All those in favor, say aye-bow.
Aye.
Thank you.
Five zero.
Perfect. Thank you. Next. What do you want to do next? Jennifer, did you take a motion to amend the agenda, right, in any fashion? General meeting first?
Yes.
So my thought is you want to deliberate actually now or you want to...
By your choice, or we can do it at the end and let Mr. Rand leave at the end of night. That's what I was thinking.
That's a great idea.
All right, so I would like to amend the agenda again. So I need a motion to amend the agenda to go into the public hearing. Jennifer made the motion. And I bet you George Riley seconded it.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Okay, so let's go into the public.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make you aware that the commission has not addressed 765 Hollow Tree Ridge Road this evening yet. As well can be moved to the end of the meeting, but I just want to make you aware that... Yeah.
How about if we knock that one off? Do you guys mind?
No. I don't know.
So we're going back to the general meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Southern... General meeting item submission application number 625, mainly regating application number 475, Michael Cecilia Donahue, 765 Hollow Tree Ridge Road, request for an extension of time to demolish structures and file the miler and the Darian land records. I guess they had a year. Is that right? That was a year ago we did this?
No, February, February this year.
Yeah.
Months ago. It hasn't been a long time, but they made it clear that they're going to have trouble getting it done in the next month or two. They're asking for additional 90 days to do that. We would obviously support.
Okay. So the request on the table is a 90-day extension to this deadline. Any discussion required?
I would bet that the governor's executive order has already given them more time, but this is simple and we should proceed.
Okay, Kara, you okay to proceed?
Yeah.
Okay, George Riley, want to make a motion to adjust it?
Happy to move approval of their application for extension of time.
And Jennifer, your light is on. You second?
I second.
In favor? Great, thank you. Good point, Fred. Thank you. All right, let's stop this. That's done. The minister done. Okay, so let's go back into the public hearing. Proposal, we're going to start from the top. Proposed amendments of the Darian zoning regulations, BOZR number 2-2020, business site plan application number 3, special permit application number 312, Baywater 34 OKHS LLC, 34 Old Kings Highway South, proposal to revise slash clarify a noted discrepancy between the front and rear building lines to reflect decisions made by the Pennington Commission in 1961 and 1979, have a respect regarding model... Regarding the same, modify the appendix A of the regulations, building line restrictions, and to modify section 1057 of the zoning regulations relative to dedication of public parking areas. Propose, proposal to raise the existing commercial building on the site and to construct a new 5,624 plus square foot two-story office building with a 1,320 square foot roof deck. Reconfigure parking areas on the rear of the site, construct a new public plaza area, construct a new stormwater management system, allow for office uses on the first floor of the new building and to perform related site roaming activities. The subject property is located on the west side of Old Kings Highway South, approximately 150 feet north of its intersection. Urban Drive is shown on assessors map number 72, slot 29 in the CBD zone. If you guys know, remember, recall, this is a small white icon professional office buildings at that Old Kings Highway. It sits in between two larger buildings and backs up to the 1020, for lack of a better word, parking lot. Mr. David Genovese at Baywater Properties owns the building next door, which is 36 Old Kings. They don't own the building on the other side and they own the building in front. Mr. Genovese, I think, purchased this property a while ago. The plan is to demolish it and rebuild it. But there's a bunch of issues that Jeremy to explain to everybody before we turn over to Mr. Maslin.
In this case, as Steve mentioned in legal notice, there's a number of different aspects to the application. Obviously, first is the site plan. You're constructing a replacement building in a commercial zone. The special permit aspect is the fact that they're looking to, as part of this new construction, put office uses on the first floor and that is a special permit use in downtown or the CBD zone. So they're making that special permit request, which Mr. Maslin has outlined in his application materials. The third aspect of the application is really some clarifications that Mr. Maslin has put together relative to the zoning regulations. One of them is a change to section 1057 of the regulations, looking to clarify... Because you could see this is a triangular shaped piece, it gets very narrow in spots. So the proposal is to clarify that you can put an office building in an area that doesn't have the required lot width. The other aspect of the zoning regulation amendments are, what Bob's going to talk about, is the front building line and the rear building lines. In downtown, there's a number of building lines. Those are in appendix A of the regulations, which dictate where development can occur. And so in this case, Bob has done some historical research and realized that clarification is really needed in this case. Of course, you may recall in past applications, if someone donates, if you will, or gives land behind the rear building line to the town for public parking, either gives them the land or by easement, they can become parking exempt. That was done with 1020 Post Road. This property backing up, if you will, to 1020 Post Road property, it's a similar fact pattern. There's a rear building line and they're looking to, if you will, donate everything behind the rear parking, rear building lot to the town to coordinate a center street south parking lot, municipal parking lot. So those are the different aspects of the application, site plan, the special permit, and the amendment to the zoning regulations, section 1057, as well as clarification of the front and rear building line.
Mr. Maslin, please take it away, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Make sure I press the right button here so that...
You're doing great so far.
Is that the slide or the presenter? That's got to be the slide version. It's on there, the full slide. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Maslin. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, which is Baywater 34 OKHS LLC. With us tonight are David Genovese and Kate Perez, both from Baywater Properties, Colin Grothier from Bruce Pinefield Architects, John Block is here as well. I don't think he's got his video on, so probably camera shy. And Dennis Dale, Dale Design, one of the landscape architect firms. I have a whole PowerPoint presentation that I've submitted to Fred. I've also submitted updated plans in PDF format for him to put in the file and distribute them. They are modifications that were made along the way. One of the things that happened here was the ARB took two looks at this and I think it was last week, the ARB approved the plans. And so we're here tonight. Jeremy mentioned these various parts of the application. I'll start off with the front and rear building line question, then I'll go to the amendment to section 1057 and move through those quickly. Business site plan, special permit, as Jeremy mentioned. And the last item that Jeremy did not mention, and I put it in the narrative, it's a if and when necessary or if and when a town agency makes a referral under section 824 of the statutes, that the commission find that this conveyance of land by easement to the town for municipal parking is consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. There's a tight timeline on this and Jeremy is managing that. I think you may get the referral from either the selectmen or I'm not sure where from, but I think Jeremy's going to handle this. Put it on the agenda next week or thereabouts. So I'll start with the quick, quick... I understand I only have 40 to 45 minutes here, so I'll buzz through these orientation photographs. This is, obviously, the outlined triangle is the site. As mentioned, it's between 36 Old Kings Highway South, which is a, an office building and I'll get this laser pointer going here. Didn't work. 30 Old Kings Highway South, which happens to be the building I'm sitting in right now. That's privately owned. Both of these buildings have been here for many years as office buildings. They're built that way. The property fronts on Old Kings Highway South and that point in the back is right in between a few different properties that make up the center street south parking lot, except for the one that's adjacent to the north. I'll get to that a little bit later in the show here. Some photographs of the site. If you've been down the neighborhood, particularly if you've been to the Darian Garden, Vegetable Garden, you've seen this. It's an old house. It's been there probably since the turn of the century. It was a house or a residence for many years and then sometime, I believe in the 50s, it was converted for an insurance office. Albert Conby's office was there and I think Bob Harrell had an office there at one point. And these slides put it into a little bit of a context. You have 30 Old Kings Highway is the glass building. In this slide, and in this slide, the gray building is 36. That's also a Baywater building that has recently been updated. That's what the old building looked like at 36 and this is the new building after the façades were all updated. That's what the old building looked like at thirty six and this is the new building after the façades were all updated. Uh, this is a zoning location survey showing the existing site, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time here on this. And now I'll get to the front and rear building lines, in nineteen sixty one. The town or the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted this rear building line. It was set at a hundred thirty feet back from the street line. Of Old Kings Highway South, and as you can see, this is a straight or almost straight uh, line. Although this is not exactly the scale, it's not a surveyor's map, that's the original map and you can see in the next slide. Where the original line was, it it runs pretty parallel, exactly parallel to the street line. In nineteen seventy nine, the area of um. Having a little problem here with this pointer. What are we doing here, hold on? Try to bear with me for a second. All right, here we go. Okay. In nineteen seventy nine, uh, what happened here was Old Kings Highway South started to get developed. And at that time, uh, the the this strip, the um. I guess northwest side of Old Kings Highway South was about to be put into the central business district, which had no front setback. Uh, like, just like the stores on the post road. In order to establish a setback from the road. Uh, the the Planning and Zoning Commission established a front building line. And when they did that, uh, they did it so that the buildings at thirty six and thirty. And other buildings on this side of the road and the other side of Old Kings Highway as well, there's another line over there. Would have a built in setback by way of this uh, front building line. The problem that came up is there's a jog in the street line now and. Uh, this is a close up of it, you could see the little zigzag uh, starting at the left. Right in the middle of that red circle and then over on the right, there's a jog back. And what the confusion that that caused was. They set the front building line at a hundred feet forward of the rear building line, well, the rear building line is straight. I think the intent was to have a thirty foot front setback, but it just doesn't work when you when you incorporate this jog because. Even on this map, the rear building line is straight. And it's supposed to be equidistant along its length from the street line. I have tried to find where the jog came up in the existing highway taking line. I just can't find it, I suspected that was something that was done when the Connecticut Turnpike was built. In the fifties and afterwards, some of the roads adjacent to the turnpike were reconfigured a bit and it might have been left over from that, but the reality is. That taking line was never used and uh, people have treated it as if it's part of the um. Uh, part of this, part of the adjacent properties. So what that does to our site is it would have created, as you can see here, this weird offset. And for some reason, again, this thing appears in deeds, but the town never took this, the state never took it, so it's just sitting here as. Uh, part of the uh, original. Lot. What it does is it pushes the front building line back by say between ten and or seven and fifteen feet or so as you run along it. It creates a problem for development of this uh, this site. We're asking that the lines be set based on the actual street boundary. So that we have a front building line that runs along an extension of the facade of. The building at thirty six, which would give us this red building, uh, this red line here as a front building line. And have the rear building line run pretty much a straight line between the rear walls. Of the two adjacent buildings, thirty up here and thirty six down here. So that's the uh, issue and the adjustment we're looking for in the rear and front building lines. Any questions on that before I jump into the text amendment? Okay, text amendment. One of the things that you get when you convey land to the town behind the rear building line, whether by fee. Or easement is you exempt yourself from rear setbacks, the problem. With this specific lot and I think this has gotta be one of maybe. Two properties in the central business district where this would come up. Where the lot narrows to the point where you have a portion of it that you can't build on, but it's forward of the rear building line. And so the text amendment we're asking for is to exempt. From exempt buildings from the minimum width requirement. And put that in as a, as a, an additional exemption in in exchange for conveying an interest in uh, municipal parking, I'll show you what that does. If you leave it the way it is, we lose the red portion of the footprint. Because right here is the minimum width. And then we lose the part behind, the rear building line is back here, so you would lose all of this area. As buildable area, which uh, in every other property that's wide enough. This would all be buildable because you're exempt from the rear setback. So this is the relief we're looking for. And if there's any questions, uh, I can take them now, uh, or Colin is here. Uh, to go over the uh, architectures, any questions on either the rear and front building lines or the text amendment?
I have a question about both, but Steve, how do you wanna handle the questions, you wanna take them at the end or?
No, let's, let's take them in line because he's he's doing, you know, the way I like to do is do with the expert and then the questions. So we just get this off the tables, move out the next.
Okay, I think it'll be more efficient this way, so we don't, we won't forget it.
Hey Jim, why don't you go first?
Okay, I, it's a, it's a question that relates to two of the issues, the modifying appendix A. And uh, the, the issue you've just mentioned about the narrowing and exempting. Are either or both of these issues. Unique to this property or are they? Do they impact a number of properties or potentially impact a number of properties?
The front and rear building line issue affects. I'll go back uh. To here. The rear building line issue affects this property. And. Uh, which is right here, this is, it's lot number two. Because that's where the jog is, right here. And it affects thirty and it runs all the way out to Center Street. I, I didn't look at it precisely for lots eight and nine on the original nineteen seventy nine map. Because, you know, I'm familiar with thirty and thirty runs out to about here. Uh, I think Doctor, uh, I forgot his name, Ashero's office is over here. Uh, I think that property would be affected as well and someday that's gonna be rebuilt and there's a real estate. Office, I think over here, that's probably gonna be affected as well, so it's several properties along this side of the street. Where this jog appears. I hope that answers your question.
Uh, what about the uh, narrowing at the back? And the loss of.
Well, that's the other, that's the other issue, that applies to this lot. For sure, uh, because. We lose a significant amount of buildable area back here that otherwise would be buildable but for this width requirement. There may be other properties that have this narrowing issue. Some of them along Tokenique Road may have it. And those properties are all subject to rear building line and any of the narrower lots along the post road. I think probably between the railroad bridge and Corbin. Whatever narrow lots over there. But it's hard to tell because, because of the way it's developed over the years and I did not go back and measure the width of all those lots.
The reason I asked the question is, I mean, subject to the views of the other members of the, of the commission, I. Don't see any reason to give the relief that the applicant's requested for both of these things. My only question is, should we just give them relief? For this property or should we amend the regulations? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to amend the regulations on the fly. In the fear that it's gonna come around and bite us in the back end at some future date, but I defer to the experts.
Well, let me, let me, let me make a point and then ask questions at, after that. Last year, I wanna say last year, but it might have been this year, it was definitely last year. We amended seventeen sites in town, something like that.
On the rezoning, yeah.
On the rezoning, so we looked at seventeen specific sites and fixed their zoning. You know, we, we looked at it at a number of them, we changed some, we didn't change others and then some we did not change. When there was either the property owner or adjacent owner was against it, so. For my, my point being with that is, is if this came up at that time, you know, when it was a zoning issue, we may have fixed this. When we did the rezoning, cuz the road is obviously not moving the second time. So that's, that's one thing to think about, the other is, and this is where I guess Jeremy and and Madison come in. If we did not make this change, would they have to go for a variance?
Well, certainly in, in the two different aspects, the ten fifty seven A, as Bob mentioned, it would affect how much he could build on this site. Relative to the building lines, I think what he's looking for is, as I said, clarity to clear down the road. Or a number of these, that's the way I see it.
Right, so we would, if, if, if this came up, when we did all those other properties. That this building jogged and it doesn't follow the road line, we probably would have fixed it, is my point, we would at least have looked at it.
Right, and when Bob and I met to discuss this a couple of months ago. It was obvious that there was a need for clarification.
And, and, and I think when the interstate highway came through. That's probably when this whole issue went sideways, cuz we know that they cut Old Kings Highway in half between north and south. So I guess the, the second question to you, Bob, would if, if. Would, would you have to apply for a variance on this if it wasn't adjusted?
Well, on the building lines. I, I think the regulations are pretty clear, you can't get variances on building lines. I think there's something in the preamble in uh, in the back of the regs. But while we're on, on that, I wanted to bring this slide back up to show you. Where a real thing that needs to get clarified. In nineteen sixty one, the street line ran along here, alright?
That's in your exhibit package, it's page ten, A dash ten. In your application. The one on your screen now is A dash eleven.
Yeah, yeah, this is just put up on a slide and it's, it's annotated with these markings. But look at this number, hundred and thirty feet, the original hundred and thirty feet was not measured from this line, it was measured from out here.
Right.
And the nineteen seventy nine map, which this is, was not intended to move the rear building line, it was intended to move the front building line. Or to create a front building line, which is a hundred and thirty feet, I mean, a hundred feet forward of the rear building line. And this triangular site that we're talking about tonight got caught up in that, as did the rest of these. Little lots, some of them were combined into thirty and then you have a couple more as you go down toward um, Center Street. So this is something that applies to several lots, it's. I, I think one of those things where, you know, before you had a good base map. Like, for example, in some of the zones, the zone boundaries are X number of feet off a street. And they don't coincide with property boundaries and there's a provision in the town plan that recommends taking a look at those. This is even more of a problem because there's two different maps that show different locations for this rear building line. And where the front building line actually should be. Needs to be clarified because you could, you can interpret it two ways. And I think the best way to interpret it is to have it so that the front uh, wall of the new building that we're talking about tonight. Runs along the same plane as the front wall of thirty six, which is right next door. There's a driveway between thirty four and thirty, so there's a break in that and plus thirty is a much bigger building. Um, I, I think the best result visually would be uh, to have the two at thirty six and thirty four along the same plane. So that's kind of a long winded answer to Jim's question, but this does affect several properties and I, I think it's truly something that. Was a discrepancy that occurred and, and should be corrected. On the other one, uh, I think the intent was to let development occur. Uh, within a rear setback by exempting properties from the rear setback. Uh, problem is that this is one of maybe one or two uh, uh, sites in the CBD where you're gonna run into this problem. Uh, a variance, I don't know what the success would be on a variance, it'd be a tough.
Yeah, the variance is just, the variance is probably just on the back line. I mean.
No, no, I'm talking about that, I'm talking about building behind the point where you're at the minimum width.
Understood. But just, just to make sure, on that street between Center Street and Corbin Street, there's only five buildings.
Would it this be changing that reg for the entire CBD?
Oh, it would, yeah, it would apply to other, other lots, but don't forget, in order for it to apply. You have to convey land to the town for municipal parking.
That's on the rear, on the build, on the building line issue.
That's, that's, no, that's on the um. This rear setback in the, in the minimum width provision.
That's the. Yeah, it's got nothing to do with the front line.
No, but I'm saying. With it, the width adjustment affects more than.
It, it's really just where you have two things. A narrow lot like this, where it's angled such that you have space between the minimum width. And the rear building line. And you convey the rest of the lot behind the rear building line to the town for parking. So those things have to come together before the regulation has any effect. So yes, it applies to the entire zone, but it probably doesn't apply to more than one or two properties.
So this, this is a little bit similar to like what happened over at BMW, where because the, the regulation change was so narrow, it only affected.
I didn't, I didn't hear, I heard what you said, Steve, but I think somebody else said something.
That's okay. Okay, we had.
Okay. Can I move on to um. Architecture? I guess that's a yes, Colin?
Hold on one second, Bob, I wanna check with any other commissioners on any questions, we, we need to hear from Larry or George or Jennifer.
I know, I'll follow along. Thank you.
George, any questions on the frontline or the back line at this point?
Let me just ask, what specifically is it that we would be doing to change the front lot line? I I see your language, Bob. Changing ten fifty seven as as it would relate to the rear lot, but is there a language or a map, something we would be adopting for the front?
It's on the screen.
That's all right.
These red lines are where we want to see the the rear building line back here and the front building line here on this lot. Now, if you wanted to, we could supply a map that shows it through the rest of the street. And you'd be adopting a new map that clarifies what the previous two maps did.
So if we adopt the map you're showing us now, we'd only be impacting your lot, right?
Right, but but there's no reason not to. I mean, we're asking for clarification, so in your, if you were to approve this and require us to supply a map that shows these two lines through the entire length of Old Kings Highway South from, say, Corbin Drive to Center Street, we could do that.
Correct. It's which only encompasses three other buildings, which is thirty. The way a pit office on the corner of Center and the other office building in between it's.
And and the basis for the the front, the front yard line, the red line is what, a hundred and hundred feet from what point? Or is it a hundred and fifty feet?
Hundred and fifty, well, I think the intent was to establish first a rear building line and then establish a front building line, giving a one hundred foot building envelope. So it would be a hundred feet forward of the rear building line. And that would be consistent with taking the nineteen sixty one map and drawing a line that's a hundred feet forward of the rear building line and parallel to it without those jogs.
I get it. Okay. And you think that works on all of the lots along Old Kings South there?
I believe it does, yes. I know for sure it works for thirty. And I don't believe that the other offices, I mean, Dr. Oshiro's building and then the two houses would have an issue.
Yeah, it's one house.
I'm going to chime in. I I think we should take a look at that so that we don't get sort of a Frankenstein patchwork of the lots with different lines on them. So we can do something that's consistent for the whole block. I'll be taking a look at that.
That's kind of what I was saying.
Makes sense. Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Who else do we not hear from? Jennifer, any questions?
No, I think I'm I'm okay.
Okay. So why don't you keep moving, Bob?
Okay. All right. Colin.
I'm with you.
You with us?
Yep.
Okay. Colin's going to do the talking now and I'm just going to operate the slide. So tell me when you want to switch.
Okay, go back to the pretty picture.
Okay.
Excellent. You're up. Colin Growth here, Beinfield Architecture. Thank you, Commissioners, for seeing our application. The concept for this building was to just kind of be in keeping with the neighbors on Old Kings Highway and take a little bit of a departure from what Baywater is proposing in the Corbin District and do something in contrast and a little bit more in keeping with this eclectic mix of modern buildings on Old Kings Highway. So it's a small, relatively squareish building with punctuated openings in the in the facade, which is a fiber cement cladding. It's a thicker panel material rather than the typical lap siding that many people might show in residential style properties. So that's a prefabricated panel offsite and then installed. And we're looking at a rain screen application, so there will be some very planned jointed gaps in the siding and neatly mitered or butt joined with transition pieces. You've got a nice cable rail or stainless rail on top with a wood handrail and and the roof deck. The office is two levels. And I I believe the Baywater sees this as being either one tenant or the potential for two tenants. I'll let them speak to that in the future and clarify their plans. And then the area you see in the foreground is kind of a foil and an extension of the Corbin District landscaping. There's a proposal for a kind of a pocket park bosque over on the corner of Corbin Drive, and this is seen as the other end of the barbell, as it were. So as you can go down the street, you can round the block towards Tokneek Road and you can see another destination when you're out during the day. And the access you see on the right of the screen is the the vehicular way to the to the public parking facility at this Center Street South Lot, I believe is what Robert said. So if we move on to the next slide. This is just the diagram of the square footage is the building area that we can move on to the the next slide. It's about twenty five hundred square feet of floor. You can see the overall site plan, which the landscape architects can speak to a little bit later, but there is a public plaza along Old Kings Highway. The building is sort of trapezoidal in shape, so it is, we've discussed it, it broadens on the Old Kings Highway side, the side of the site and tapers to a shallower facade to the west. And that's where the primary entry is by the parking resource and we're linking up the sidewalk with a basic paper vocabulary that the landscape architect can discuss to the perimeter sidewalk at the adjacent property. So that provides nice access to the parking area and also continuous access to the adjacent properties. So we can move on. Inside is just a very simple floor plan. There will be offices lining the exterior and associated business core, so kitchen, a break room, meeting room. We're planning on having an elevator for access to the second story and also to the the roof terrace and then a single stair as the building is small enough to qualify for that. We can move on. Second story is largely a repeat of the first story with the program. Rejiggered around a little bit. In this case, it's looking as a single tenant space, so there's additional office space on this level with common lounge space in the middle for collaboration and a meeting room on the on the left side of the screen.
Colin, Colin, if I could just interrupt for one sec. So the idea, this David Genovese from Baywater, so the idea is that actually this is where we're going to move our office to from Grebes. Because we're at about two thousand square feet above Grebes right now, and this is about twice, two and a half times that. So our idea was that we would build this for ourselves and it'll be the the building from which we also manage the Corbin project. So it gives us, you know, some public meeting space, more public meeting space for meetings with architects and the team and you know, big picture, it also enabled us to eliminate that strange triangular land. And as you'll see in the future drawings that the team will walk you through, it allowed us to change the parking in connection with the Corbin project, which is already actually a part of the Corbin approval. So this is something we anticipated a long time ago, but I just wanted to make it clear to you all that this is intended to be our office. But it is set up to, if we ever downsized or needed less space, we could carve it into two tenant spaces, one per floor.
Sir, David, can you just please identify yourself in what you do for the record?
Oh, sure, sure. I think David Genovese from Baywater, thirty four Old Kings Highway South, the principal of the company that went on the property.
Thanks, man.
I think I'm on the next slide, Bob.
The roof?
Yes, please. Roof is just occupied roof area with screened in mechanical area on the south plan there, elevator access and the stair. That's pretty much it.
This part is the vestibules enclosed and the rest of this is open deck.
That's correct. And then I can look at the
This, I think, was an idea that came up after we approved nineteen Old Kings, across the street.
That's that's correct. That's correct. David Genovese here. Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Dave. Okay.
Okay, so really quick on the elevations, it's pretty much what you see in the rendering, just flattened out. The, we worked through the jointing of the panels a little bit more seriously than the initial generic hatch pattern that we applied to the walls. So we went back and at the request of the Architectural Review Board, put a little bit more thought into it and showed where we plan on having the joints so that it's a very organized, well-composed facade. And we'd be working with a typical module of about one foot high by up to ten or twelve feet in length, but most of the most of the spans and the visible facades are shorter than that, so it's going to be a planned, a very planned and regimented jointed, jointing pattern that will be expressed in part of the building architecture. So we think it displays nicely and should be a very handsome addition to the downtown.
That's okay. We don't need to get too deep into that, Colin. That's Architecture Review Board. If they signed off on it, we're good.
No problem. This is just the building section showing you the approximate floor to floors and the overall height of the building and kind of how it all comes together. The elevator section is on the upper right. A typical section through the area of the building with the two office levels and the roof terrace. The mechanical screening is on the upper left. And then a longitudinal section showing you the little pop-up access to get to the roof and the two office levels is on the on the on the bottom. And you can see there is a little bit of a grade differential between the west side of the building, which is the, what you see on the lower left. And then the where Gold Kings Highway and the proposed plaza area is on the lower right. And that wraps it up for my portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on one second, Bob. We're going to go around the horn and ask the Commissioners any questions of the architects. Jennifer Lee, you want to go first?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Um. No, I, you know what? I think I'm okay for now. I might circle back.
That's fine. Dex and my list is very verbal. Any questions on this expert presentation?
No, I'm not. No, no questions.
Jim Rand?
No questions for me.
Thank you, George Riley.
Just quickly, the in the front, that circular apron area, I assume is not for ordinary traffic, vehicular traffic. Is it suitable for emergency vehicles or is that not its intent either?
I bet we're
I think that's actually been revised. That's the public plaza area and initially we had a horseshoe shape that did kind of read as a driveway and now it's much more rectilinear and there's a solid architectural concept behind that from the landscape architects that I'll let them address, but it's it's seen as a is the public space on the on the project that foils the the termination of the the Corbin Drive and Old Kings Highway intersection.
Yeah, that's that comes up, I think, two pages from now and it's in the Landscape Architects document.
I was just looking at what was delivered to be, but I see it's different there. Okay, thank you.
You're looking at the original plans, George. That's, that was like a horseshoe pedestrian walkway. That that was never intended for vehicles.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, Carrie Gately. Any questions, Karen?
On the architect? No.
Great, thank you. Okay. Next up, Bob, I think you go to John Block.
John Block, you with us?
I am. Good evening. I'm John Block. Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm John Block, Principal of Time Bond. And we prepared the site civil engineering for the project. This is the overall site plan that provides some site context that shows the thirty four Old Kings Highway site, the triangular shaded section in the center of the project. Center of the sheet. And it also ties in the approved Baywater Corbin Block project. The site is outside the FEMA firm floodway and flood plain. It's outside the regulated wetlands area as well as a regulated area for the Goodwise River. Next sheet, Bob. This is the site plan. Access to the proposed office building will be from Old Kings Highway South through the existing shared driveway in Town Easement. And the surface parking is located along the south side of the shared driveway. We are proposing a concrete sidewalk along the frontage with Old Kings Highway South. With a concrete sidewalk that comes along the south side of the shared driveway. And then for the entrance on the west side of the building, there's brick pavers proposed for the entrance from the parking into the building. In the easterly portion of the site between the building and Old Kings Highway, there's a landscape plaza area that is featured. That'll be reviewed more with the landscape architect with his presentation. Next sheet, Bob.
Hey, John, I'm I'm just going to jump in to make, just just to clarify that. So is the in the packet, it it the in in C two point oh, it's a horseshoe driveway. Is that, is it not the horseshoe driveway anymore? Now it's something different?
What's shown on these drawings were the revised drawings that were submitted to the
Yeah, I can see right there. You know, right along the road there, the the way the driveway is is different than what's in my package. Other than that, same plan.
I think I can address that. Bob Maslin again. The original application showed a plaza area between the building and Old Kings Highway South as having a horseshoe type sidewalk. That's been reconfigured. And that was done through the ARB process and as the plans were
That that answers my question. Thank you.
And we did submit updated plans in electronic form today to Fred and he's got sets of architectural site landscape.
We're behind the times.
Okay. That's it on site plan questions?
Let's go around them. Let's go around. Derek Gately, let's go with you first. Any questions for John Block?
Not specifically for John Block, but just specifically in general, can we please get materials that are up to date for the meeting?
Yeah. You changed this today, Bob, is what you told us.
Well, we changed it after the ARB process, and that was a week ago. So we got them updated as quickly as we could. And put into a PowerPoint. I understand.
It's just very hard to like consider and and you know.
You're a hundred percent right. You're a hundred percent right, Karen. No, because it's the
Now, we apologize. That's on us.
It's all right. Yeah. Okay. There was Larry Warble, Carrie Gately, Jennifer Leahy. Any questions for John Block?
No. Good.
Jim Rand, any questions for John Block?
No, thank you.
And then George Riley, any questions for John Block?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next, who's next on your list, Bob?
I think we're gonna, yeah, Dennis, Dennis, if I could, if I could just start this quickly because I think we want to, this is really more of an Architectural Review Board discussion. I want to, if you could just go forward one slide, Bob. I just want to make a couple of quick general comments from our point of view and then Dennis can answer any questions you may have.
Hold on one second, David. Do we have this piece of paper?
I hope so.
This was in the updated set. I'm not sure.
That's a no.
I think this was submitted to ARB, but this was all part of the update since the ARB last week.
We don't have this, David.
Okay. So we can, we'll email a full set of this to you tonight after this call.
I've already done that. Fred has.
Oh, okay. But what I wanted to explain just at high level was that, you know, as we started working on this, as we showed you before, the images of what we did, 36 Old Kings Highway South, you know, when we started to look at this in the lot reconfiguring opportunity and the fact that this is sort of this very strange triangular property, we focused upon the building we could build that would sit in good context with 34 and 30 Old Kings Highway South. And we focused on the idea of creating a nice public plaza that would be, you know, truly usable by people that might grab a meal, you know, a meal to go from one of the restaurants downtown and want to sit in a quiet place. We deliberately didn't put an entrance to the building on the front on the Old Kings Highway South side so that this plaza, in our opinion, won't appear to be kind of owned by 34 Old Kings Highway South. The entrance is from Old Kings Highway South. It won't be owned by the building. It'll be set up to be really used by the public. And then what happened was as we were working on the final details of the landscape architecture for the Corbin project, the building two over on Corbin and Old Kings Highway South is where the Tibbetts Building sits now. And this is the four-unit apartment building that you all approved a couple of years ago. The idea is that we've kind of refined the landscaping and we're trying to tie it all together. So this was a big part of our discussion with ARB to kind of unify the presentation and to create some different, you know, landscape architectural features. And Dennis has really been the mastermind, you know, working with Colin and Bruce in, in kind of creating a set, a set of different public space alternatives for people to enjoy in the town. So I don't know. I mean, I feel badly we're keeping you and you wanted us to stick to 45 minutes. So I don't want to go into more detail than you want us to or need us to on landscape architecture. We wanted to make sure Dennis was here in case you had questions. How much detail do you want on this? Or would you like him to make the full presentation?
The question, dude, is Dennis, I think, is your landscape architect?
He is. He's working together with Towers Goldie on the project.
Okay, so in our packet, we have a landscape architect from Eric Rains LLC. Is that right?
He was the original landscape architect when we started the project and first filed it. But what happened was the, the work on, on the Corbin project sort of crept around into this. And so we decided to actually ask Dennis and the Towers Goldie folks to, to reconsider the whole thing and, and kind of tied together, which they've done. And that's the landscaping plan that was approved by ARB last week.
Okay, so I, I guess I apologize on our side. We don't have anything from Towers Goldie. We only have stuff from Eric Rains, Lantain Arctic, so we're behind the April. So I don't really think we want to talk about it if we don't have these plans is what the problem is.
Is it possible to review them with us on the drawing, on the screen or no? Does that not?
It, it's fine by me. I'm going to have to ask the other Commissioners how they feel on it. It's, this is, this is one of those things that makes us keep the hearing open.
I know. I, I thought you had everything and I apologize.
I, I get it. It's, we're, we're all trying to get through this stuff together and things change on the fly. It takes longer. So Jennifer, do you want to table this or you want to go off the screen?
Ugh, it's
Did I study the one?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, yeah, I can't, I mean.
Well, let's, let's, what about, what about Larry? You want to, you want to, or you want to go off the screen?
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm, I'm all right going through the screen.
Jim Rand?
Yeah, I don't see us getting into a ping pong match, the applicant and the ARB and, and, and planning and something. I'm happy to go through this, this issue on the screen.
Okay. George Riley, you okay with the screen? Or you want to?
Yes. Yeah, I'm fine.
Eric Gaetley?
Yeah.
You're okay?
Process, I'm actually really not fine with this, to be very honest. But in terms of it's the more relevant board that should be considering these issues has seen these plans. Unclear to me why these wouldn't have been provided to us. But it's more in the ARB wheelhouse and they've approved and moved forward on this. So is their letter doing so provided to us?
I don't think we've received the actual letter yet, have we, Kate?
No, we have not received the letter.
We don't have that either.
I don't think, I don't think, it, it seems like this public space has been moving around and this is where it's finally landed.
I know, but like in terms of process, I as to the substance, I'm, I can get comfortable moving off the screen. I do think though, if people are representing that a board has already approved it, we should have some, there should be a letter or an email or something to indicate that. Do we have that?
Uh, it's David Genovese from the applicant. I, I think we have an email from the, the ARB, but we don't have a formal approval letter yet. I think things are moving just a little more awkwardly given, you know, the way in which everybody's kind of working right now. So we have like an, we have a, we have like a kind of email indication from the Chairman of ARB.
Can that be provided to us?
Yeah, we can. I'm trying to find it right now.
And can these plans, because to go off the screen is one thing and it's helpful. Um, but to be able to like consider them and be able to look at these documents and after the fact, in terms of the information that was verbally provided is actually helpful towards considering the application. And this is sort of, my issue is really personal, not substance.
Yeah, I got you. The, the only thing I'd tell you, Karen, is a lot of times we do get the AR pre-approval letter after the fact. Not 100%. Lately, ARB's been
We have nothing.
He's been very good and had it in front of us, but it sounds like we're okay with going off the screen, David.
Okay. Well, yeah, as soon as we have the letter from ARB, we'll, we'll, we'll submit that to you.
And then Jeremy will get this stuff before we deliberate on it.
This is Fred Donat. I, I would just say that as Bob had mentioned, the, the materials were submitted to us this afternoon and have been included as part of the record. But as you all know, they have, they have not been distributed to you as commission members at this point. But all this information has been included as part of the record.
So Fred, what does that mean as part of the record? Because to me, that means something different. I don't understand how, I don't understand what that means with how you're saying it.
It means that, it, it means that these revised plans were submitted to us this afternoon and we've included these plans as, as part of the file on the application.
But how can people access them? How can we access them?
What, if, if we were in a live meeting in the conference room together, I bet you thousand donuts, Bob would have given us eight sets to every single commission.
Oh, sure.
Right.
I don't doubt that.
Given them to you as soon as I had them, I wouldn't wait for the meeting.
Right. It is, it is our intention as staff to, to get these up on the website with the rest of the application materials that have been submitted because they were, because all of this was submitted this afternoon. We haven't yet gotten it up on the site, but it will be up on the site by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is it bad for him to forward that email to us?
Yeah, I'm going to forward you the note we have from ARB.
I'm reading. I'm asking, I'm asking Fred, is there some reason you can't just forward us that email from Bob?
Yes, we can. We can forward it to you.
David, it's Colin.
If I, if I can just, just one more point on, on this submission. When I do these applications lately, I submit PDFs of them at the same time I submit the paper copies so that it's easier for the staff to post them on the, on the P&amp;Z website so that anybody can pull them down and view them. And that'll be true of this PowerPoint presentation as well. So you'll have access to this. Fred has a, has the actual PowerPoint file. So all of this is electronic and you'll have access to it as soon as, well, when you get the email, it'll have links to the server that I put them up on. And it's just a matter of time before Fred pulls them down and gets them actually posted on the town website, right, Fred?
Yeah, that, that's fine, Bob. It's
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
We're just used to getting this stuff in advance. That's all.
No, I got it. I got it. It's just an unusual sort of time now and
This is Colin with Beinfield Architecture. I just wanted to pick David and, and Kate and, and Dennis's memory really quick. It, it's my recollection that the, this revised plaza design from the horseshoe was actually revised and submitted to the ARB before our first hearing with them. And I, I just want to make sure that the zoning commission understands that, my recollection is, is this is something that went through two rounds of ARB and this general configuration at, at this point. So it's not something that happened since their approval of this concept last week.
So are you saying though that we can go onto ARB and watch their video meetings and download the materials that they've posted publicly and access all of this?
That, that's what I'm, I'm trying to, I believe that we amended this plan prior to the first ARB meeting.
All right. I'll figure out what meetings they are and try to watch them all. Thank you.
The, in the May meeting, the landscape plan will be updated to the configuration you're looking at now. When we initially went to ARB in April, that was the horseshoe plan. So it was updated in the ARB meetings to David's point to kind of bring it in line with the Corbin project and tie it all together. So the May meeting, you will have the accurate information.
Kate, can you
Well, eventually
Staff will eventually get these to us. And we'll go with it. We're gonna, we're gonna let the hearing open as to what it's doing. But why don't you go ahead with whoever's going to present this on the screen?
Dennis, if I could just ask for you to be, you know, as kind of efficient as you can and just give an a high level overview of the landscaping plan, given the hour.
Right. Okay, let's, we're on the site plan right here. And
Okay, this, this plan here?
Yes, I think that's fine. The, what Colin had mentioned earlier regarding Corbin, oh, yeah, that one's a good one too. We're looking kind of southeast on Old Kings Highway. And the, the concept of the plan was actually such that it would tie into the Corbin District with materials and provide a little bit of sense of history. There's a low stone wall out front that provides a little seat wall. And the access, as you're heading north on Old Kings Highway, there's a little kind of turnoff where you would walk into this, what we consider a vest pocket park. And what's interesting about it is that, like what David had mentioned, is that it's a public space. It's part of the public realm. It's a space that, because it doesn't have a front door on it, it allows people to come in that space and enjoy it, whether you, you grab something from a local restaurant or, or just looking for a place to, to read a book. Handicap accessibility is a big part of this. It allows us to come off the sidewalk into that space. As Colin had shown earlier, you can see that the grade is a little bit lower in that, that area. There are, there's another small seat wall that is parallel to the driveway entrance that picks up a little bit of a grade there. The plantings around the outside really focus on seasonal interest, everything from perennials that are early spring blooming hellebores, lant and rose to much later seasons. We have chyde blow and some azaleas up front. One of the things we're looking at doing for the public realm is that using, you'll see these two large trees right along Old Kings Highway. One of them, we're planning to root prune and move slightly to the north. They are large copper beech that will get very big. So the intent is to utilize that and help define the, the streetscape a little bit better in front of, of the, the new building. And essentially, that space is intended just to be kind of a fun, open entry as a part of the bookending of the other corner at the Corbin Drive, which is the Corbin Corner Park that we're calling, that has a bosque of trees in it. So access to the back, to the front of the building, to the parking lot is along the driveway. And there is a straightforward unit paver walkway out to the parking lot and a, a large sycamore tree is planted in that, at that back end, which is, you know, one of the iconic trees. There's another large one just up the street. Sycamores up the street on the west side of Old Kings Highway. I guess you can go on to the next images that show the, I think there's some planting detail, images. Bob?
That one?
You there? Is there one more slide? Yeah, essentially, that, that goes over, I mean, this is the plant list there and here's some details. The furniture, lighting, it's just a low-level lighting in the four corners. Materials that we're using blend with the Corbin District palette. The park itself is brick. You see the stone wall along the edge of the brick there. We're using these granite piers. You see at the top image on the upper right that have a pin and feathering to them. Hopefully we can find salvaged material that give it a sense of age. And the layout itself, I didn't bring, bring this up earlier, but the layout itself is to give the sense that it's a little bit of an old foundation building that might have been there at one time and giving a sense of history to the, to the small park. And so furniture you can see is kind of fun. Adirondack chairs with, you know, kind of larger benches in the back. So that's, that's about the whole park concept there. Is there another image? I think that's the last one. Yes.
Bob, can you go back one slide?
Talk about that one or, I mean, there's more detail.
Yeah, okay. So let's stay there for a second. So this, I, I'm kind of confused where the park, where this pocket park is. It's on the Old Kings Highway frontage?
Yes, correct.
Okay, then the design earlier where it showed, I think it was the architect design where it had an umbrella, yeah, an umbrella table? Where, where's that? Has that gone?
Well, the furniture, that was just illustrative furniture, not, you know, it's not, that was just the architect's idea, not the landscape plan. Okay, so again, we may change the furniture, Steve. You know, we're not 100% committing to that furniture.
I'm just looking, I'm worried, but I'm trying for the driveway to go back in from Old Kings Highway to the 1020 parking lot.
Bob, can you show with the cursor where that easement is?
There's a driveway right here.
Okay. And was there a walkway on the other side? Okay, and was there a walkway on the other side?
No, right here. Now, when you come in, there's a curb, a driveway to get into the under, under the building parking and there's a row of parking in front of the building at number 30. Another curb and another, uh, opening to get into the parking for number 30. 30 actually includes this driveway, all right? The ownership is with the, uh, ownership of number 30. The town has a right of way across it to get back and forth to and from the, um, municipal parking. So this, this is the drive here. It's two ways. I've been there since they built number 30 for sure. Um, and there's a little, there is a sidewalk here on 34 between the building and the edge of, uh, the right of way. There is no sidewalk here, but we have no control over that. That's either up to the town or, uh, the owner of number 30. But if you were to put a sidewalk here, you'd make it too narrow for, for, uh, two-way traffic.
Okay, so the public plaza.
Public plaza is up here.
The public plaza is on the Old Kings Highway side.
Correct. Old Kings Highway South is down here. Building is here and public plaza is in between.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about landscape?
If I, if I can just interject, I may have been the last to know this, but on sliding my cursor to the right, I find a way to enlarge the picture by clicking the plus. And you get a much better view of the details of what you're looking at and then you can click and drag the picture in case anybody else didn't know that on the commission.
I didn't know that, what?
Slide your cursor all the way to the right and I get a, uh, a, a little box where you can click the plus sign to enlarge the picture that Bob is presenting to us. And you can move the picture by right-clicking the picture itself and dragging it around to see it. If I can see it much larger than.
Any particular slide you want? Any particular slide you want up, George?
Uh, the, the, the last one is fine, or you might want to go back to the first. If people want to see that enlarged, they might benefit from that.
This one?
No, before that, I think. Uh, yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, I think, yeah, you can see it a little bit larger. You can go beyond a hundred percent, I'm seeing. So anyway, I don't know.
Is that what you're talking about, George?
That's what.
I'm doing that, but you gotta tell me where you want it, what you want enlarged.
All right, I get it man.
I, I'm able to control it myself. I can click and drag it around. I can enlarge it myself. So.
Okay, great.
But I need to know.
Did you have a substitute question about the landscaping?
Let's go. Jim, any questions for the landscape architect?
I have nothing, no.
Um, George Robb, we heard from Larry Warble. Any questions for the landscape architect?
I'm good, thank you.
Jennifer Leahy?
I'm good.
Carrie Gately?
I don't, I, I can't ask any intelligent questions. Like, yeah.
Okay, I got it. Okay, what's next on your list?
Uh, I'm almost done here. I just wanted to go over the status of the municipal parking so we all know. The existing parking consists of easements in favor of the town behind 1020 and 1014. And a shared parking agreement behind 34 and 36. Uh, Old Kings Highway South. Access, one-way access between First County Bank and, and 1020. Um, and then back and forth two-way access between 34 and 30 Old Kings Highway South. And then of course from Center Street across the remainder of the lot. Uh, we're proposing to take a portion of the subject property that's behind the rear building line that you're going to clarify hopefully and convert it from shared parking agreement to parking easement. So as far as the right of the town to use it, it's going to be the same as it is today. It's just going to be changed from shared parking to uh, parking easement for that little triangle piece that's right back in here. Uh, this is a pictorial and you'll get to look at this in more detail. I, I know we're running late on time, but I've, I've laid out all of the different components uh, to this Center Street South parking lot, uh, that are, that are behind 34, behind 30, 36, and then behind the post road properties.
We don't have, we don't have this slide, right Bob?
Uh, I'm not sure if that was in the original application or not. Um, you have it now.
We don't have this either.
Look, it's part of the, part of this, uh, PowerPoint, so you'll have it. This is an illustration of the existing parking and it, it, it has 90 spaces. And this is what it's going to be reconfigured to as part of the Corbin project. 34 Old Kings Highway piece of it's down in here, but it's all part of the reconfiguration that, that you've already approved as part of the Corbin project. Uh, this part down here is going to be, uh, part of, it's new. It's going to be part of the, uh, project we're talking about today. Just, uh, for the record, I've submitted a copy of the existing map. This is recorded in the land records. This darker section here is shared parking agreement. The lighter section here is parking easement. And, uh, I've just thrown this slide up to show you that these two documents already exist. Full copies are, uh, submitted. Fred has them if you'd like to read them. And the part of 10, of 34 Old Kings Highway South, it's going to become part of the easements gets shifted over from parking lot agreement to declaration of easements. And we'll file the, uh, necessary documents on the land records to take care of that. Um, and we've uh, come to the end of the substance. Now, the one thing I wanted to mention here was our comments to Darren Ostafine's DPW comments. Um, some of these are just statements, uh, others are, um, more in the, in the way of comments. Drainage, we've covered all the drainage in the drainage report. Darren mentions these parking spaces. Um, this is an arrangement that already exists. The only, uh, change is, as I said, the conversion from, uh, shared parking to parking easement. The town already has the obligation under the original documents to maintain the parking lot, uh, bay water at that time back in 2008. Uh, did the reconfiguration and after that was completed, maintenance was up to the town. Um, and this recommendation of an as-built, uh, that's acceptable to us. Uh, he's looking for an as-built showing, um, uh, utilities and buried infrastructure and things like that, and we're okay with that. And that's it. That's the end of our presentation. Sorry, I went over my, uh, 45 minutes.
There's a lot going on here.
I'm sorry?
There's a lot going on here, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Um, all right, what do you want to do?
I, I guess identify open issues that we can hit up, uh, next week.
Yeah, um, it's Bob, I, and David, if you're the applicant, um, I, I'm going to suggest that we keep this hearing open. Um, does any commissioner think that we're at a point where we can close it tonight? Uh, Jennifer Leahy?
No, I don't think we can close it tonight.
Hey Larry, do you think we can close it?
Uh, no.
Steve, you don't have to ask everyone. We're, we're okay leaving it open. We understand the frustration and we apologize. And it's a complex, I, I joke around about this one. It's like, if this is for the, for a relatively small commercial project, it's got a lot of history and a lot of complexity. So, um, I think, you know, we, we will have to make sure that everything is distributed tomorrow and, you know, we're, we're fine regrouping.
Um, we'll, we'll get back to Jeremy too with, uh, other additional items that I think we'd be looking for. I mean, obviously it's a landscape architect stuff is, is going to change. I think one thing that is going to be important is, um, I think Bob offered up to be able to do a map that's going to go from Corbin Drive to Center Street on where this lot line would go. Um, that they're all going to be the same. That looked, you had, Bob had, he had one that was.
That's fine.
I was going to question, so Bob, when we did 30, when we did 1020 and we moved the rear building line for 1020, we, we did that specific to 1020. And it wasn't applicable across all the properties along the post road. So for me, having heard the concern from the commission, I understand what they're concerned about. Why can't we treat this in the same way, given the irregular shape of this lot, this triangular lot? Why couldn't we make the proposal just, you know, moving the lot line? Cause what, what, what we looked at simply put was um, aligning the rear building line with what exists at 36 Old Kings Highway and 30, and then we actually stayed inside of that? So why couldn't we just treat this the same way, Bob?
Well, in 30, well, I suppose we could, but what's going on here is the rear building line in 61 and the rear building line as shown on the 79 map are significantly substantially different. That leads to confusion and ambiguity. Same with the front, which leads to confusion in the location of the front building line. So we could, we could just draw the rear building line, a new rear building line and a new front building line only on this lot, if that's what the commission wants to do. And that's the way we've submitted it.
I'm just thinking that this is such an irregular piece of property, given its triangular shape. And none of those other properties along Old Kings Highway South have any similar geometry. It, it makes sense. And then we're holding back from the building line that was established by 30 and 36. So seems a simple way to do it. If there's concerns, I understand.
Yeah, this is Larry. Since I'm the one who brought it up, but I was really more just accepting Bob's offer at the time. It just, you offered up the, the idea of doing that. It just seemed to me something as a commission, we can make it easier for the whole block to kind of look the same, but I, I don't feel very strongly about it one way or the other. So just to put that on the table.
I do agree with you though Larry. I mean, there's only, you're only going past two other buildings.
Oh, it's totally fine. I, I just, I'm thinking if you're concerned about what the implications could be, we can't do an architectural study of what the impact could be on those other buildings. Um.
No, but it's, we, we've changed zoning lines and, and, and lines around town over the last couple of years and if this is some instance where the street's crooked and they were supposed to take land from you and never took it, I would just.
I'm sorry, did anyone? They said the issue was jogged. It wasn't that the street's crooked. I, I, I'm sorry. I'm just having a lot of issues with like stuff coming into the record that's not sort of like the record. I don't know. That's me. Maybe I'm just a stickler for process and, you know, documents getting to people on time and like things being presented in a timely manner, but, um, I don't know. Whatever. I was asked to speak, so I'll stop speaking.
The, the, the building line question is that's, nothing's changed from our, uh, application. That's all in the original application.
I'm just, I'm just looking to fix the front street.
I'm sorry.
Want us to talk to the staff?
Yeah, we'll talk to the staff and see what we can get done. We're going to leave it open anyway. Um, and then if, if, I, I guess the easiest thing to do is to move on is any commissioners have any questions that can email to you?
Me or Fred, yeah.
We'll do it that way. Let's, let's keep the hearing open. If commissioners have, you know, specific questions or minor questions, just email to Fred. We'll get them to, um, we'll get them to, for, Jerry, we'll get them to the applicant and then we'll get this cleaned up. Um, for the next time we're going to be on the document. Right, can we put it the next time?
Bob, can you pull everything together for next week?
I suppose so. I will call you in the morning. You, we were going to talk anyway. Uh, just so that I'm clear, Jeremy, next Tuesday, I think you wanted to address the 824 referral question?
Yeah, hopefully we can.
Can you fill me in on that a little bit?
But may as well put it out for next year. So what we'll do Bob is continue the public hearing to Tuesday, June 9th, 8pm.
Okay.
With the details to come out on the agenda later this week.
Okay.
Cause we didn't, we really didn't get to parking tonight on this. I mean, we got into architecture, which is fine. We didn't really get into the parking issues. Um, and I want to make sure we nail down this public park that we're, um, well, understand where it is and how it, how it works. I mean, I can see in the architect's plan, there's no front door to the building on Old Kings Highway South. Okay. So we're going to.
June 9th.
Thank you.
Tuesday, June 9th, 8pm.
Buddy. Thanks guys.
Again, apologies on the, on the, not giving those drawings to you quicker. We really apologize.
It's, it's, I mean, if we were live in person, you would have given us a packet of eight.
Yeah.
Right? Whatever. It, it didn't happen. It was said, get rid of page, the one from this, whoever this person is, the lease a person, throw those out and hear the new ones. I left it open anyway, but we still would at least had something.
All right, well, we'll let you get everything else you guys have to do. Thanks again for all your, all your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Okay, next thing on the agenda. Landfilling excavation and regaring application. Uh, number 476, Daniel Wang, 26 Lee Warden Lane. Proposal to raise the existing, think of family dwelling, build a 4,025 square foot house in generally the same location and construct a new driveway, terraces, stormwater management, forms related site development activities. The 1.85 plus minus acreage site, subject property is located on the south, southeast terminus of Lee Ward Main, approximately 400 feet south of Lee Ward Road and is shown in the sister's map number 29 as lot 102, 103 in the R1 zone. Um, this looks like a great, um, lot in a really nice neighborhood with a very old house on it. Um, you're knocking down a building.
That's correct. Brian Smith, DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering is here, uh, to describe the proposal. Basically, for the commission for a regrading proposal, the property slopes from where the existing house is down towards uh, Lee Warden Road, Lee Warden Lane. And the existing driveway is, uh, straight and then loops around. And what they're trying to do is have a more direct driveway with a bigger slope. It's going to be a 10% slope driveway. Uh, they're not really changing the grades near the property lines and back. Most of the grading is going to be associated with new driveway and the areas around the driveway. So that's the proposal type, that existing residence will be demolished, a new house constructed and, uh, Brian's been submitted revised plans. These revised plans are last dated 520. Those are in your packets and Brian's going to run us through a little bit about the regrading and how that's going to change things in the drainage system they're putting in.
So the reason why we're looking at this application is really based because of the regrading.
Exactly.
Okay, and there's, today there's no stormwater transit system at all.
None.
There's none. And we're going to put that in. Okay. Um, Mr. Andrea?
Brian Smith.
Mr. Smith. I'm sorry, Brian Smith. Um, take it away, sir. You're up. There he is.
Good evening, Commission. Uh, for the record, Brian Smith, project manager for DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering PC. Here representing Daniel Wang. Can, can everybody hear me?
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Um, I'm here representing Daniel Wang and Barbara Wang Malisova, the owners of the property. They've bought these parcels. Their intention is to consolidate these parcels. Um, as Mr. Ginsburg said, remove the house, driveway, detached garage and construct. Remove the house driveway, detached garage and construct. One single family resident on um, two consolidated lots. So this lot consists total of one eight five three three acres. That's parcel A two on the northern. Side of the property. That is just under point seven acres and parcel B, which is equal to one point one seven five three acres. So parcel B is actually an oversized lot for the R A one zone already. But the owners would like to consolidate the two lots for the one residence. I'm going to, I apologize. I had the development plan up there. Here's, this, this is the existing. House garage driveway will be removed. Now move on to the development plan. Um, so construct a new dwelling um, with front door facing towards Lee Warden Lane in the. Northwestern direction, fronting towards the cul-de-sac as best we can. Um, with the driveway and courtyard coming off Lee Warden Lane towards the front of the dwelling. There'll be access to garage. On the northeast side of the dwelling. Uh, there'll be one proposed first floor terrace. On the western side, which is covered by habitable space on the second floor. A rear yard uncovered terrace as well as a flattened rear yard for recreational use. Uh, site grading, as Mr. Ginsburg mentioned, mostly in the front yard, which would be. Northwestern quadrant of the property was all related to creating a driveway that would conform to town standards. As well as the backyard grading was done to flatten out a little bit of the area for recreational use. And also to create natural drainage patterns that would mimic pre-existing conditions. Uh, the drainage design for the existing analysis, we use the fresh meadow approach. Uh, which the town of Darien requires. That's zero impervious coverage on the lot. Um, criteria to be met would be a net zero increase for the one to twenty five year storm. We satisfied up to the fifty year storm in an effort to gain approval from D P W for a. Overflow connection to the municipal system. Um, in doing that, we actually satisfied a, a net decrease in peak flate, a peak rate of runoff for the one. Two, five, ten, twenty five, fifty and up to the one hundred year storm events. Um, we did receive municipal comments uh, dated May thirteenth and. Resubmitted on May twentieth. We were in agreement and were able to amend uh, the plans accordingly. Uh, now as far as the drainage systems themselves, there's going to be two. Detention systems that are both going to be equipped with low control outflow orifices and high overflow systems. Both systems will consist of twelve of the plastic prefabricated Coltech units. One serves the entire roof area. The other system will serve. The driveway courtyard as well as the garage access area of the driveway. Um, both of those posed outlets will be then connected to a junction box onsite with a gap, uh, gravity. Connection to the municipal system pending approval from D P W after the planning commission process. I'm going to move on to the sedimentation and erosion control. What we would like to do is utilize the existing driveway during the first phases of construct, of, you know, demolition and. Construction. So we'll be installing anti-tracking mat on the existing driveway that. Runs parallel to the northern property line. When the new driveway is cut in, we will have the. Anti-tracking mat transitions properly over to the new roughed in driveway cut. Um, we've also showed recommended proposed locations of silt fencing and various stockpiles around the site. Um, using a series of silt fencing. Running parallel together on the contour elevations in order to minimize the amount of square footage of lawn. That each silt fence would actually have to work for and serve. Uh, silt sacks will be installed immediately upon installation of any catch basin um, or junction box that's open to the surface. Uh, our next slide is standard uh, or standard notes, specific notes, specific details for the site. Um, I'll be more than willing to answer any questions on any of these. Um, next is the zoning location survey showing. Zoning compliance to the town of Darien for the R A one zone. Um, there's no variances being sought. Everything is within. Uh, regulations. And the landscape plan uh, who was, was prepared by Louis Campana, the architect. He, believe he's with us this evening as well. If there's any questions on that or the architectural plans, I think uh, Mr. Campana can weigh in on that. I think that kind of wraps up. I, I've got all the architectural plans at the end. Um, I know the A R C is in charge of that pretty much. If we need to go to any of those, we have those at our disposal. Uh, but at this time, if anybody would like to ask any questions.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate that. Um, my, my one standard question we ask with them. What's the um, are you bringing much fill on the site?
No, the, the regrading of the site. No, we're not bringing much fill at all. If you, if you look at the grading of the existing topography versus the proposed grading. I don't think that we go over eighteen inches in, in many areas, if in any areas at all. It's really. Just a front yard regrade in order to comply with the ten percent driveway grade.
That for the driver.
Not a lot.
I'm sorry. So the driver goes from uh, one eighty three on the low end up to one ninety two?
Yes, on the approach to the front, front courtyard, correct?
I, I, cause I mean, I was out there. I didn't, I didn't notice it was that steep of an incline, but I would say I went over the old travel. So there, there's no real negative net cut and fill?
There's a little bit. I think Brian, maybe one of the things that might be a little deceiving is these are the one foot contours. Uh, to, which is great for when you guys are out in the field building it, but so it looks a little busier than maybe it is. I know uh, when I walked the site, it is gently sloping down to Lee Ward, no doubt about it. That's the way the water runs. The water will continue to run down the driveway. The drive, the proposed driveway will have a ten percent slope, which is the max allowed. Uh, but you can see Brian has included two catch basins and a great. Right? Yep, right there to collect a lot of the water which could come off the roof and the roof leaders, right, Brian?
Yes, the, the entire roof of the building is going to be collected and routed to. The higher of the two proposed detention systems. Then the, the entire courtyard as well as the eastern. Access to the garage, that entire driveway and courtyard is being collected and routed to the lower of the two detention systems. So only the neck approach of the driveway itself will continue to flow overland towards Lee Warden Lane. And into the catch basin on the eastern side, downgrading of the property. So in, in essence, when we, when we laid out the drainage design, we wanted to mimic existing conditions as best we can. While creating an improvement to not, not only the site, but the right of way drainage and the surrounding property. So what we did. Was still utilize where the water was going before this proposal, Lee Warden Lane, collect it, hit the code. And then what we'd like to do in a controlled fashion is re-release and by going to the municipal system with an overflow uh, connection. It'll actually remove surface runoff from the surface that's been going into the right of way and into municipal basins. We're going to intercept it at our site first and then release it back to where it's going, mimicking drain, the pre-existing drainage patterns.
Okay, that, you're going to have to show me where, where you, where you're catching it, but let me ask you questions first. The upper, the upper set of Coltechs is at one ninety four and one ninety three, correct? That's closer to the house?
Yes, it, yes, it's uh, denoted as detention system number two, correct?
Uh, okay, yeah, it's a testing system number two. Okay, then the lower one is at. Um, you know, one ninety, one eighty nine, one ninety one. That's detention system number one. That's going to catch the courtyard. That's going to catch the courtyard water, right?
Yes, if you follow the inlet manifold from detention system number one. The pipe goes up to a set of two catch basins in the proposed courtyard. And if you look at the grading and within the court, we've created a slope to direct the surface water to those corners.
Got it. And then, so then the, the water and it can't be that much from. Basically with a driveway where one eighty eight, one eighty nine is, is all going to flow down to the road.
Correct.
Okay, at the bottom of your driveway, are there any catch basins in the road?
There is a, there is a catch, there's a catch basin to the north, which would be down gradient of the dr- our dr- uh. The opening of our driveway. That is approximately about a hundred and, a hundred and twenty feet. North. The basin that we propose to tie our overflow pipes into is also on the. Eastern edge of Lee Warden Lane, but it's, it's south of our driveway entrance, heading back more into the cul-de-sac. So some, some ser- the water from those driveways is going to end up down Lee Warden Lane about a hundred feet on the edge of the road. And then into a catch basin.
Okay, I see. Now Darren asked to find okay this.
Yes, he sent in comments for the record. So he's comfortable with this, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Um, that's, those are my questions. Let's go around to the other commissioners. Um, let's go ladies first, Jennifer Leahy. Any questions for um, this, this expert?
No question.
Karen Gately, any questions from this expert?
Uh, no.
Okay, Larry Warble. Hello, Larry. Uh, Jim Rand?
Yep, sorry for the delay. Um. Yeah, no, just, just, I, I, I just to make sure I'm just understanding one thing. So it, it's, it's. The way these parcels are laid out, that's how they exist today though, right? I mean, that. This parcel B and parcel, parcel A's dash two?
Yes.
There's nothing new about that. It's just way it's always been that way, right?
Yeah, yes. It's, it's a, it's a one twenty five acre site inside a one acre zoning district. So you couldn't put two houses on it anyway. Right? You don't have enough land. You don't have two acres.
No, no, just noticing the old, right, that the old driveway went through one of them. So it's just.
Yep.
It, it's just a quirk I'm trying to understand. That's all.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not, that's fine. No other questions.
Uh, Jim Rand?
I have no questions. Thanks.
Uh, George Riley?
No questions. I, I'm impressed by how they can direct all that water. No, no questions by me.
Yes, sir. Okay. Um, then the next most important thing would be landscape work. Uh, I would not hear from landscape work. Okay. Um, Brian Smith?
Yes.
Did you say you had a landscape architect that wanted to tell us who was here with you today?
Uh, Louis, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, board.
Thank you. Do you just want to go over what your plan is and?
Sure. Um, would you mind just going to the landscape plan here? So um, the intention of the, uh, the landscape plan.
Please introduce yourself.
Uh, Louis Campana, architect from the office of Louis Campana Architect, Bronxville, New York. Um, pleasure to meet you gentlemen and ladies this evening. The uh, the intention of uh, of this, this plan here, uh, number one uh, was to create. Privacy for uh, the owner, but also to create screening from neighboring homes to this site. So what we've done. Was incorporate a series of conifers and evergreen trees around the perimeter of the property. Uh, in, in a staggered format uh, to, to create more of a natural appearance. Uh, meanwhile, also. Maintaining a large uh, lawn in the rear and also in the front of the property. Along the uh, the foundation of the home, we chose to use uh, a mix of. Uh, boxwood, American boxwood and also hydrangea and other perennial plantings um, for foundation planting. Uh, but also with the intent of creating layers up to uh, the dwelling itself. Around the, the parking area and driveway, we uh, incorporated a low boxwood hedge. Uh, with intermittent larger uh, boxwood just to create more of a formal appearance. And then again, uh, down the uh, the perimeter, I'm down the neck of the driveway, we. We put a uh, an alley of low planting. Um, just to highlight and, and reinforce that, that line, give it an axis and. Appearance of grandeur as you enter the property to the house. We also have uh, a series of cobblestone banding. Or, or aprons along the driveway, separating the asphalt surfaces from the oil and stone surfaces. We have a.
Is there just one of those or two of those?
Well, there's one at the gate uh, right here. I, I, I can't really use my mouse here, but there's one at the, the front gate.
That we know.
The two piers. There'd be also one separating the uh, the neck of the driveway to the front motor court.
And.
And then another separating the motor court from access to the garage on the northeastern side of the house.
Okay.
Intermit, intermittently throughout the property, we've also dispersed a number of deciduous trees to add color during the autumn season. Uh, and some dimension to the site uh, rather than just uh, a grass.
So do we know how many trees were taken out in total? You take.
Brian, do you have that on the uh, development plan?
Uh, yes, uh, sixty.
Take it out sixty trees. You're basically clear cutting it.
Well, a lot of the trees. A lot of trees along the perimeter are going to be maintained, specifically the larger significant trees.
And those are all ones that are identified on the landscape plan. So that's existing tree, point two inch, existing pine, existing pine, existing maple.
Yes.
Okay, got it. So the, the, the visibility from, I think, the neighbor next door, which I think is seventeen. Okay, are you good? Are you set there, sir?
I'm all set, yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
George, Jennifer Leahy, any questions? At the landscape plan?
No, well, sir.
Larry, any questions about landscape plan?
No.
Hey, Larry Warble?
Um, no, no questions, but I will, I do want to comment that this is probably a very reputable plan. Because I noticed that uh, there, it, it's coming from a uh, a, a, a location that's two blocks from the house I grew up in.
Right? I knew you were going to say that. The Bronx.
So can I get, get that straight? You grew up where?
Uh, I, I was on the corner of Northway and New Russell Road.
Very interesting. Small world.
Yeah.
For sure. Uh, George Riley?
Not that he's biased, don't worry. Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Jim Rand?
I had some questions, but on Larry's recommendation, I'll just wave them. I have no questions.
See what happens. There you go. Um, okay, Brian Smith, are you, are you set for now in your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, is there anybody in the public domain that would like to speak to this application? Fred, do you know anybody that might be out there?
We have no.
We have no one in the chat.
Yes, yes, I would like to say something.
Sure, please identify yourself and, um, where you live.
Um, I'm Anne Barrigan, and I live at eleven Lorden Lane.
Okay.
Um, I guess I had a couple of questions. Um, first of all, when I looked at the, I'll start with the landscaping. Looking at the landscaping, uh, the plan that I saw, um, that was presented tonight and I received earlier, I counted that seventy-eight trees were going to be removed. Um, and it looks as if nineteen were going to remain, although the bulk of those would be behind the property um, as opposed to the front. And I only mention that because that might be also something to be considering with the, uh, storm runoff. So I just wanted to make that comment, and, uh, the, I had just seen the landscape plan for the first time, so, um, I'm not really sure what I'm seeing on that. Are there, I see there's probably some trees going in, but I can't really see exactly what's happening there. Um, so I'll just mention that as a, as a first comment, and then I guess as far as the storm runoff, um, one of the considerations I think should be made is, um, I understand that there are going to be two detention basins. Um, I noticed that they both tie into each other before they go to that, um, catch basin that's in front of the property or the east side of the circle. And I just want to make sure that, that piping would accommodate both of those detention basins. Um, and the second thing is, as far as the driveway, where there's going to be this ten-foot, uh, differential, um, and there's no catch basin or anything, um, that's going to capture anything on its way out to the Warden Lane. There is another catch basin further down that was mentioned. Uh, I think someone mentioned it was a hundred and twenty feet. I'm not sure if that's the right dimension or not. But that catch basin, um, often, uh, has a lot of debris around it. And I don't know, sometimes there are times where, uh, the water doesn't flow freely into there. I think the house, um, adjacent to it has a sump pump that also runs into that. Um, and I'm just, uh, wondering if any analysis was done to understand how much water would be in the street if there was some kind of, uh, storm and how long it would last there and what consideration could be made for the fact that that catch, catch basin's often not clean.
Okay, um, Brad, I'm going to hand it back to you to answer some of the questions in one minute. Um, and I want to see if I can address a couple of them by looking at your plans. Um, and we're going to bounce around a little bit. Let's do the trees first. Um, if the, the landscape, those competitive architect trees?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Uh, and thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Um, so as you, uh, would view the, the site today, you will gather that the majority of, of the trees on site are, uh, well overgrown and the site itself is unmaintained. So, uh, i- in order to create a property that would number one be pleasing to, uh, the neighbors and, and streetscape in general, uh, the clearing of the site is done to enhance the visual, uh, product. Um, right now, we do plan on saving, uh, a number of trees along the perimeter. Uh, ones that we believe couldn't fit in properly with the, uh, the under-screening that we plan to propose. Uh, many of these trees are, are well over fifty feet tall, so, um, we, we thought that was a responsible approach. Uh, we also want this site to, uh, be perceived as fitting in with the neighborhood. So as you look around, uh, the cul-de-sac, you will notice that, uh, the majority of the properties don't necessarily have uh, a tremendous amount of trees within the front lawn. And what that does, it, it, it basically enhances the presence of those homes on the street. So we want to, uh, fit in with the makeup of the neighboring community.
I might just-
That answers your question.
Um, I might just interject that I personally have a number of trees in my front yard that are as tall as what you're saying. Um, so I don't think they need to be, so many need to be removed um, to enhance the look of our neighborhood. Um, so, but I, I can, it is concerning, you know, when you think of, um, I think it'll be a pretty drastic change in our neighborhood to see so many trees removed. I can understand a number of trees being removed, but that just seems like quite, quite a few. Um, and especially where trees do help with, uh, runoff.
Um, that's, that is why we, let me, let me just switch to one other answer, and I think that you talked about that. Um, on your, in terms of trees adding, I have forty-eight evergreen trees going in and three deciduous trees? You want to talk about that a little bit?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
I have forty-eight evergreen trees going in, which are about twelve feet tall, or eight, eight to twelve feet tall, and then three deciduous trees.
So- Right, so, uh, the deciduous trees that we are introducing to the site are going to be placed strategically, uh, throughout the lawn. Um, and the, uh, the conifer and evergreen trees are going to be primarily around the perimeter of the site, uh, with the intent of, um, uh, screening, uh, the homeowner from the neighbors and vice versa.
Are you able to point out where those are on your landscape plan?
It's hard for me to do it. I don't have control over-
Somebody does.
The cursor?
I, I can, I think I can do it. I can do it here.
Okay.
Um, it's going to be the two pears and the, the red maple.
That's correct.
Which one do you want me to have?
So, well, we, we have the, the two Cleveland pears, I believe, um, one of which is in sort of the curve of the parking area, the, the garage, uh, parking area and the asphalt driveway.
And how tall are those?
Well, uh, at the time that they'll be planted, they'll be about twelve feet.
And then how, how tall do they grow?
Uh, over thirty. I mean, it, it, it certainly would take some time, but the intention was to give the property a distinct coloration during the seasons.
And there, oh, so there'll only be three of those?
There's two Cleveland pears, um, and then there will be, um, an autumn blaze red maple on the, uh, western side of the parking court.
Okay.
I think that faces your house, ma'am.
Um, yes.
You're on the bottom, you're on the bottom of the cul-de-sac, right?
No, I'm across.
Across the street, okay, got it.
Hi, I'm, I'm Holly Giordano, and if you guys can hear me, I'm next to, um, the property on seventeen. I have no problem with the landscaping plan. I think it's going to be fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
So keep, keep going, Louis, please.
Uh, so, so those, uh, those are the three, um, deciduous trees that we're implementing here, but also what's, uh, important to understand is that there will be um, some grading in, in the front yard, and we are implementing, uh, a front, uh, wall with piers and a gate, uh, which we plan to, uh, plant heavily in front of and behind for further curb appeal in front of, but more privacy on top of. Um, so, I think, uh, that should be something also to keep in mind to number one, soften the site, the approach to the lot, and also its visual appeal to, to the neighbors.
Okay, then, can you just, um, yeah, that part, the part in red that you just squared out, that's the part that faces, um, this woman's, Anne's house.
That's correct, yes.
And what are those that's planted there? Those aren't trees. Those are, what, bushes or something?
No, those aren't trees. Those are, uh, musquitas grass. So it's a decorative grass.
Mm-hmm.
It is the plant that, uh, a lo- well, I should say the grass and, uh, and also, uh, American boxwood, which is a, uh, prevalent plant material in, in the area.
Mm-hmm. And so where do the evergreens start? Like where do they, where are they?
So the evergreens, uh, evergreen screening starts just on the south side of that red circle that Brian just drew.
Mm-hmm.
And that wraps the property along the western side, the southern side, the western side, and also a portion of the northern side. And the point being is, we don't want, uh, the screening to interrupt the presence that the house has on the street, which again is uh, a mirror or reflective of the presence the other homes on the street have.
Okay. Um, so I think that's the landscaping, a little explanation.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is Justin Macaron. I, I'm on Christie Hill. The, um, I'm abutting, I guess, the southeastern portion of that. Uh, since, since we have the landscaper on the line, does, does that mean you're going to, um, remove all those tall pine trees between our property and this property? Is that the correct thought? It's just a question.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not a landscaper. I'm, I'm an architect.
Okay.
So-
I can't read the, the, the lettering on this, on the chart. Are those all new trees or are those existing trees?
So there are a few, uh, existing that we, we plan to maintain, but we also are proposing, um, a majority of these to be new plantings.
Okay. And, and my only, my only comment, I'm, I'm very happy that this, this, uh, this is, um, looks like a nice house replacing what's been a very deteriorated house, so, uh, I, I appreciate that. But I will echo the other woman's comments that, um, that hundred and twenty feet to that drainage, um, to the drain. It could be, there was always water problems from this, this old house here, plus the sump pump. And that, there's always, it's wet in the middle of the summer. Um, I think they corrected some of it, just maybe with the work they've done on the old house. But it is worth somebody taking a look at. I think she's raising a good point. It doesn't impact me, but walking down that street always seems to be a lot of water, um, just accumulated there. So if you're increasing the flow, that would be a problem.
We're going to get into that in one second. Um, okay, so Anne, just to answer your-
Yeah.
Just to answer your question relative to drainage?
Yes.
Yes, you're, you're correct. Is it ten-foot grade change? From the street to the high point?
Yeah.
It goes from about, uh, one eighty-three or one eighty-two up to one ninety-two?
Yes.
Um, the, the set of drainage that's on, first off, the site has no drainage, stormwater drainage management today at all on the property, zero.
Understood, yep.
Okay, so they're putting in a system that's going to be at elevation one ninety-two that covers-
Yes, I saw that. Mm-hmm.
Another system that kind of goes from one eight, uh, from one ninety-two down to one eighty-eight?
Yes.
It, the, the difference that's left is the five feet between one eighty-eight, one eighty-three, which is the bottom half of the driveway that goes to, um, goes to Lee Warden, uh, Lee Warden Lane.
Yep.
Brian, this is where you come in. Um, does it, does it make sense to put, um, drains in the middle of the driveway around one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, one eighty-five? I'm not sure.
There's, there's one, one thing I want to make clear, um, put on the record is that the neck of the driveway that's going out to Lee Warden Lane under our proposal is approximately a hundred and twenty feet long at fifteen feet wide. Of pre-existing conditions, we had over three hundred feet of asphalt driveway that was directly connecting to Lee Ward Lane also. So we're even though there is some free release off this driveway into Lee Warden Lane towards the municipal system, we've made a significant, um, decrease in the amount of impervious coverage going towards Lee Warden Lane. The issue with putting, sliding the basins, uh, additional basins downhill is by the time you collect the water, due to setbacks on the property line and gravity, we just don't have anywhere left to put any drainage and then have a, a sensible outlet. So we've, we've-
I'm not looking to move. You know, I'm looking, I'm looking to move those. I'm saying if you could, driveway drains in at like one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine. Does it go right into detention system number one?
It's something we, we can, it's something we can look at.
You know what I'm trying to do? Because you have, you're not getting the water from one ninety-two down to, to one eighty-three.
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, if the elevation's order to get that water into that system, there should not be an issue with putting the, uh, basin, uh, around one eighty-eight.
Right, yeah. Then, then, then we're just, this, the sheet, it's going to go from one eighty-eight down to one eighty-three is that distance is just got cut in half. Right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And then can you just explain to the neighbors, um, the satisfaction, the two other storm sewer drains that are in, in Lee Warden Lane, the one for the north and one to the south?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you, uh, rephrase that? I'm sorry, could you just repeat that question?
Can you just, um, explain to the neighbor the two existing stormwater drains that are in Lee Warden Lane, one to the north, one to the south of the driveway? You said there's one a hundred feet north. You said this is-
Yes, yes, correct. Yes, there's two catch on the eastern side of Lee Warden Lane. One that is just east of the ass circle within the cul-de-sac, and one that is approximately a hundred feet north of the northwestern property corner of our property north of Lee Warden Lane. It's, it's just to the right of the word, Lee Warden on the plan.
Can you switch it back?
That's-
Can you switch the screen back to the development plan and then circum and red like you did for the landscape plan? You're good at this.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm learning on the fly. Okay, um, here we go. So there's, there's catch basins there that the driveway, the driveway water on, on this, the northern direction, and then the cat, the other second municipal basin is located here, and that's the basin that has the proposed connection into the rear of the basin, taking surf water off the surface and directly into the municipal system.
Okay.
I might, if I could, this is Anne again, I might point out that that, um, more northern catch basin is a low point on the Warden Lane, so water does come from the other direction into it as well as this one.
And that's basically right in front of your house, right, Anne?
Uh, pretty, it's right in front of our driveway.
So right now, I guess, does, Brian, do you think existing water off of our site goes into that dr- catch basin today? The northern one?
Yes.
And because there's a drainage system on site, it's got to be less in the future.
Substantial amount currently.
Yeah, you, there's-
Yeah, within our, inside of, within our drainage summary, the proposed conditions, the watershed- Yeah, within our, inside, within our drainage summary, the proposed conditions, the watershed map. It's a pro- it's probably about sixty to seventy percent that consists of the northern and eastern sides. Overland sheet flow towards the right away and overshoot the southern basin, the one I'll refer to as the cul-de-sac basin. And so. Surface water you're seeing coming, coming down that way anyway. In pre, I'm sorry, in pre-existing conditions, so we're. That water's still gonna make it there from the bottom neck of the driveway and a little bit of the adjacent lawn area. But going back to pre-existing conditions, this entire site. Um, two-thirds of this site were overland flowing to this, this catch basin now.
Maybe one comment.
Yes.
I was gonna say, um, obviously, um, previously there were. Close to a hundred trees to help with over the lawn. Um, the second, uh. That was one of the points, and the second point, I just lost my train of thought on that one, let me think for a second. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot what my second thought was on that, but that is one, um, that I do think makes, oh, the grading. The grading's going to be, uh, more accelerated down at that bottom part than what was previously there. What's being proposed? And if I'm reading it right, it seems from the report, is it table four, I believe? It looks like from the analysis that there is greater runoff, like a net increase. Um, in runoff too, if I'm understanding that table correctly.
Uh, I can clarify the table within the drainage summary report you're referring to, correct? The peak flow and volume summary?
Yeah, let me pull it up here, um.
The volume summary, yeah.
The volume summary, yeah.
Okay, so, due to, uh, ground, having a presence of groundwater. And not being able to provide a four-foot separation between the bottom of our infiltration media and seasonal high groundwater. We, we designed within the town of Darien's Drainage Manual for a detention system. Rather than retention system, so what we're doing is, we're releasing a, a. Little bit more volume of water, but we're controlling at what rate that we release it.
Mm-hmm.
So that. At, when you, when you analyze the peak flow and provide a net zero increase or an overall decrease in the peak flow. Um, that's the most important criteria in this type of application.
Okay, so if I'm understanding.
We're, we're, our systems are almost acting as bathtubs that have a low controlled outflow. So we're bringing in water, and then it's gonna trickle out the bottoms as we control it through a smaller orifice pipe.
Yes.
So that even though there is more volume, we're gonna hold it back and release it over a four to six hour span. Rather than it all coming at the peak fifteen minutes of a storm event.
Okay. Okay.
I would just like to address the, I would just like to address, uh, one question regarding the removal of the trees. Brian, you said based on, uh, based on the development plan. Um, there were a total of seventy-eight trees being removed?
Yeah, Brian said sixty, Anne said seventy-eight.
Sixty.
I, I, I counted seventy-eight from the plan that were identified as being removed, but.
So, a majority of those trees are, are located, uh, within, uh, the footprint of, uh, the new improvements. Um, so, but, and then just keep, keep in mind. That, uh, we are implementing a total of sixty-five new trees and plantings. Along the northwestern quadrant of the property. Um, which in effect would help mitigate, uh, the issue that you're discussing regarding, um. The trees and plantings, uh, taking on some of the water. Uh, that would be present.
I think they're, I think they're further back, um. Of, of, you know, further upgrade from where the concern is.
If the trees that we're discussing, or the runoff that we're discussing is, uh, the last, uh, half of the driveway. Plus, um, a bit of the north, uh, western portion of the property.
Looks like there's ten, maybe ten trees that are, you know, rather sizable trees that are being removed. Proposed to be removed in, uh, the area where we're talking about that ten-foot grade. And sort of in front of the detention center, there's actually a few more if you're talking about really. I don't know if you're calling it the motor court or the, whatever that square area is on the pavement. Cause that's gonna feed into the detention, so if you go kind of a lower, you know, from that motor court forward, one, two. I'm counting thirteen trees, um, you know, rather sizable trees. Um, you know, I mean, the, really, the concern is that there is a water issue on that street. Um, and. I just, I, I, I'm just, when I hear there's a ten-foot grain and accelerating down, and there's nothing. Kind of holding it back.
The ten-foot grade, um, conforms to the, the town regulations in terms of.
I'm not saying it doesn't. Yeah, I'm not saying it doesn't conform, I'm just saying that, that, um. You know, I just, I just wanna make sure that what's being addressed is how that water. Um, how it flows into what, Lord Lane, reaching, uh. Going to a different catch basin than the one adjacent to the property where you're tying to other, um, detention, um. Basins too, and the fact that that catch basin is at a low point, um, for the street. So it's getting water from two directions, and there tends to be a water issue there, plus an issue with just. Uh, being clean and open to re, you know, to accept water too.
Right, that's, that's understood, and, and Brian, if you, you can chime in here if you want. But what, what we're doing is, we're minimizing that, that, uh, sheet flow off of the property by these improvements that we're proposing.
Um.
And one thing I'd like to add is that the, the proposed connection is, is to this, this basin. I'm not, I'm not sure if you were on that or not, I know, I understand where, where you live in, um, this basin here. Our, our formal connection would be to this basin, which does that flow underground? I understand.
Oh, I understand, yeah. I understand that completely. I mean, my, my one other question before was, I just wanna make sure the two basins, since they tie into each other before they go into the catch basin. That, that pipe obviously would accommodate both, um, just as an aside. But yes, going back to that, I understand completely that everything you're tying into goes into the catch basin. Uh, with the larger circle there, and it flows underneath to that, um. Other basin, so it's going to get all the water from the house. And the motor court and the driveway is gonna go into that basin, flow down while the ten-foot drop. Et cetera, is gonna flow out into the street.
That water's gonna be collected. And detained and slowed down within our two systems prior to a controlled release. Which then connects.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not a direct connection.
Right.
No, I understand that.
I think the, I think the pipes you're talking about, Darren Ossifying said to make it larger, right? We made it larger? Yeah, the, the. Or, uh, uh, correct if I'm wrong, um, Brian, or, um, Darren Ossifying told you to make that pipe bigger? It connects it, and then you made it bigger?
Um, I don't, I don't recall that for, I've got the comments in front of me.
Yes, somewhere.
We did, we did capacity calculations to show that that pipe was sufficiently sized. Due to, due to the two outlets being controlled orifices. We only have a certain amount of water that can come through those pipes before the, before they make the municipal tie-in. Um, one thing I wanted to just bring back to the record, um, and probably hopefully put Anne at ease is that. Our pre-existing analysis, being the fresh metal approach, we analyzed the site as if it was one hundred percent vacant of impervious coverage. So the systems and analysis that we had to do to meet the code, um. Are, are sufficient to, are conservative.
Mm-hmm.
Because we weren't taking, we weren't taking credit for the pre-existing house or the very, very large, long driveway that was there. That's been she flowing overland towards Lee Warden Lane, only relying on the two catch basins on the east side of Lee Warden Lane to evacuate water. Now, with the series of catch basins, leader drains on the roofs. Uh, those collection systems being routed to two separate systems that then slow the water down, detain. And then we have the controlled release back to the one, the first basin. So, we're, we're making a, a, I see that as a major improvement to the, um, eastern side of Lee Warden Lanes right away. And the drainage performance of this site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we did hear, uh, we did, anyone else in the, um, public domain would like to speak? We did hear from Holly, I think Gina Donner, who's next door, and Justin Macron. Um, would you have liked to add anything else, Holly or Justin?
No, I'm fine, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
That's Holly, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Would anybody else like to speak to this application?
We have nothing else, Steve.
Okay, great, um. And, uh, commissioners, based on any of these comments, do we have anything else that you wanna, uh, ask? Um, let's go ladies first again, um, Jennifer Leahy?
No, I'm okay.
Kara?
No, I mean, there's a lot to consider, um. But I don't have any questions at this point.
Um, Larry Warble?
No questions.
Hey, Jim Rand?
No questions, thanks.
George Riley?
No, thank you.
Okay, Jeremy, are we missing anything on this application?
Nope.
Okay, are you all good? Um, uh, Brian Smith?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, it looks like we're in good shape, um, I would adjutant a motion to close this hearing. Is that Larry Warble? Or George Riley?
I'll make a motion to close, uh, the, this, uh, presentation.
Is there a second? Great, thank you, Jim and Jennifer, all those in favor? Great, thank you, okay, uh, thank you, sir. Thank you, Brian, I think we're all set, um, we'll deliberate this at the next meeting, get back to you. Right?
Very much.
Thank you, ladies, thank you.
All right, moving on, um, we have time for one more. It's now ten to eleven.
Um, you wanna kick them both to next week, or you wanna, they're each ten minutes?
Uh, it's, it's ten to eleven. We have two more. One is, um, the House Edition on Homewood, and the other is a Stone Path on, um, Rush Island. It's up to you, it's up to you guys.
But I'll wait, I'll defer to the rest of the commissioners.
Kara?
I'm tired.
Right, that's, that's two and three. Um, all right, let's push those to next week, so I missed the Homewood people and Rush Island. Um, I'd love to defer to you to next week, we ran out of time. Um, what they are probably, because we did not get this thing up at the beginning, also, I apologize. We are trying.
Um, we'll continue the hearings to June ninth, eight P M.
So the first items on the agenda would be that, um. Uh, five Homewood Lane and seventeen Rush Island Road.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, where are we now? That's it, so we did the hearings, we did all the other stuff, at the beginning we did the minutes, uh, looks like we're looking for a motion to adjutant. I think that was Larry Warble said most adjutant, and Kara's got a smile on her face saying she's second here. Was in favor?
I.
Bye.
Bye.
Please adjutant, thank you, everybody, sorry it went so late.
Thanks, Mark, good night.